I call to order the regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission on this Monday, May 13, 2009. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, has the role been taken?
It has. All are present tonight except for Commissioner Ling.
Okay. Tonight, we have a couple of proclamations and presentations. Our first is a presentation of the 2018 Historic District Commission Preservation Improvement Award.
I'll lead first. The Historic Preservation Improvement Awards are presented each year to honor exterior improvements to residential and commercial property in the city of Mount Pleasant in four areas: preservation, restoration, new construction, or downtown historic district choice. This year, we are pleased and privileged to recognize the efforts of George and Nancy King for the exterior rehabilitation of their 1920s-era colonial revival home located on East Broadway. Highlights of their project include unveiling four exterior windows which had been hidden by past renovations, window replacement with era-appropriate divided mullion options, and paint treatment that is appropriate to the historic period and also provides decorative highlights to their brick chimney. In addition to their exterior improvements, the King family restored their hardwood flooring, stripped and refinished their wood trim work, and installed and restored period lighting. We'd like to thank the King family for their dedication to our local architectural history. If they'd please come forward to receive a plaque.
Sorry you were behind me.
I'll just talk from here, and then Vice Mayor Lori Gillis is going to join me with the proclamation for celebrating 50-year anniversary of the Isabella Child Development Center.
It's an honor for me this evening to be a part of this proclamation. I have personal history with the Isabella Child Development Center. Eighteen years ago, my daughter attended the preschool both as a three-year-old and a four-year-old. She got her start in education there. She went on to finish Mount Pleasant High School as valedictorian, and then also got admitted into U of M with a Hail Scholarship for free tuition. And I am certain that her start within your program made her a successful student. So I personally thank you and the other members of the team that has kept this going for 50 years. Thank you.
That's great.
Whereas, the Isabella Child Development Center opened its doors in 1969 to provide free preschool services to local eligible three- and four-year-olds, and whereas, the ICDC has dedicated the last five decades to providing quality care and educational preparation services to over 1,200 young children in our community, and whereas, the ICDC has been recognized by the State of Michigan Department of Education as a five-star preschool and is commended for providing countless children with a superior early childhood experience. Now, therefore, we, William Joseph, Mayor, and Lori Gillis, Vice Mayor of the City of Mount Pleasant, Michigan, on behalf of the City Commission and citizens of Mount Pleasant, do hereby extend congratulations to the Isabella Child Development Center on the occasion of their 50th anniversary and offer sincere appreciation for the important role they play in our children's future. In witness whereof, we hereunto set our hands and the great seal of the City of Mount Pleasant, Michigan, this 13th day of May, 2019. Thank you.
If you would.
Would you like to?
Your voice carries so lovely.
Okay, thank you. There will be an ice cream social at the preschool location, the Presbyterian Church on Watson, this Sunday at 1?
Two to four.
Two to four o'clock. So any previous attendees or anyone that would like to celebrate this monumental task and observation of the 50th anniversary, please join us.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we are honoring May as the Better Hearing Month. Would Patrick and Dr. Shannon Smith and everyone else? Thank you. Thank you for coming. Whereas, audiologists in Mount Pleasant, Michigan, and nationwide observe and celebrate Better Hearing Month each year during the month of May, and whereas, the Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes and values the efforts of all who work to eliminate, minimize, or minimize the isolating effects of communication disorders in the one-in-five families affected by them. And whereas, more than half the people with hearing loss are younger than the age 65. And whereas, hearing loss is the third most common health problem in the United States. And whereas, our citizens who have overcome communication disabilities through the services of audiologists are now able to lead independent, productive, and fulfilling lives. And whereas, Mount Pleasant is proud and honored to have audiologists offering quality education and healthcare services to its citizens. Now, therefore, I, Will Joseph, Mayor of Mount Pleasant, do hereby proclaim May 2019 as Better Hearing Month and encourage all citizens to recognize the achievements of audiologists in improving the quality of life for people with communication disorders. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and the great seal of the City of Mount Pleasant, Michigan, this 13th day of May, 2019. And now, I would invite our very own Director John Zhang of DPW to come up. We are honoring May 2019 through the 25th as Public Works Week. Whereas, public work professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people who reside in the United States. And whereas, the infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided and maintained without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector and are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Mount Pleasant to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in this community. And now, therefore, I, William Joseph, Mayor of the City of Mount Pleasant, Michigan, on behalf of the City Commission and citizens of Mount Pleasant, designate this week of May 19 through the 25th, 2019, as National Public Works Week and urge all citizens to pay tribute to our public works professionals and employees and to recognize the substantial contributions they make every day to protect our local and national health, safety, and quality of life. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and the great seal of the City of Mount Pleasant, Michigan, this 13th day of May, 2019. Moving on. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
Mayor, we would like to suggest a new item 21 that would ask you to consider going into closed session for a discussion with the city attorney.
Do I have a motion? Commissioner Coolick?
Move to approve a closed session pursuant to subsection 8H of the Open Meetings Act to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute.
Second.
If there's any objection? Vice Mayor Gillis?
I have reservations adding this to the agenda. I would like it to be discussed in public.
That doesn't do anything with the motion or the second that's on the table. Call the question.
Question has been called.
You're just voting to put it on the agenda right now.
Right. I guess we'll do a roll call vote for a closed session, right?
This is just to put it on the agenda. When you get to item 21, then you need the roll call vote.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll go. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
So the motion fails.
It fails. It needed two-thirds. Needed five. Thank you, Kathy Ling.
Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to our public comment section. This is the time to come forward and talk about any issues that are agenda tonight. If you are hereby chance to talk about the Brown Street project, this would be the time to come forward and talk to the City Commission. If you would, you can come up to the podium, and you'll have five minutes to speak. State your name and your address.
My name is Rose Trains. My address is 1217 North Drive. I want to mention some facts that relate directly to this issue of Brown Street's consideration. The hospital was built 75 years ago and referred to as "that building out there in the field." It and a little house for nurses were surrounded by space. Our home was the third house in that whole area. Everything else was space. It was built in 1949, so our house is 70 years old, and we've seen a change or two in the area. Pullen School is 69 years old, constructed in 1950. Its playfield was a cornfield. Part of it adjoined our backyard. But now, the only deer we see in that place, in the playfield of Pullen School, the deer are the children playing there. Isabella County Medical Care Facility became real around 1965, and is about 54 years old now. I mention these things because they relate directly to Brown Street also. A new medical building is soon to open on Brown. Other businesses on Brown have their parking lots that definitely use Brown Street daily. The safe space for travel from Hyde to Broadway and back, parking spaces on both sides of Brown, delivery trucks, ambulances, emergency vehicles, trucks, loading and unloading cargoes, getting children to school, safety by parents who deliver them, excuse me, who drive them. Used to be, of course, you'd see a parent walk past holding a child's hand. Well, those days are gone, period. They pack up and bring the children to school in cars or trucks, and they have to park on both sides of the street in order to have room enough, safely enough, to see that their children get into the building and out of the building safely. Medical care staff and shift changes mainly use Brown Street all the time. Huge, and I mean huge, food supply semi-trucks deliver supplies and needed foods to medical care and the hospital, and they have to use Brown Street to have room enough to maneuver. Visitors by the hundreds use Brown for medical buildings across both sides of the street. They must have the spaces because they come and go all day long and many through the nighttime as well. There are about 275 students at Pullen School. Many ride school buses, many do not. There are city buses that use Brown Street. There are all kinds of vehicles that use Brown Streets: fire trucks, ambulances, police cars. It's not a matter of, oh, let's take the children to school, goodbye. Well, we'll see you later. Go have fun. It's not that at all. It's a very, very necessary kind of place for all these different transportations to function wisely. More width of Brown Street could easily be a plus, but narrowing that street, I have one question. Why? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to give public comment tonight?
I just have a question. I read the new--
Please come to the podium.
I read the newsletter, and I was wondering why you can't go through a better explanation of why the road is being narrowed before we have comments. Oh, Mark Sullivan, 1153 North Drive, Mount Pleasant, Michigan. That was my question.
Thank you. Is there anyone who else would like to give public comment tonight? Seeing none, I will now close the public comment section. We'll now move into our consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda? First, we have receipts of petitions and communications. Nanshur, would you like to go through those?
Yes, under receipt of petitions and communications tonight, you have the report on pending items, and one of the specific items on there is the details on some self-defense classes that we intend to offer this coming year, and we plan to move forward with that as we discussed in one of your work sessions unless you tell us you have any concerns with that plan this evening. We have the March minutes of the Parks and Recreation Commission, the April minutes of the Planning Commission, the communication from the Planning Commission regarding approval of the 2020 to 2025 capital improvement plan, and you have three correspondence that were received in your packet regarding the Brown Street decision you'll be making this evening. One was from Joan Long, who lives on Brown Street. One was from Martin Turfsky, who's the CEO of McLaren Central Michigan, and by the way, he offered to meet to discuss it, and we contacted him for that meeting and indicated it would not be necessary. He indicated it would not be necessary. And then from Diane Falsetta, who's the principal at Pullen. And then you have a correspondence from Stephanie Sacerito regarding the parking on Preston Street, and then on your diocese tonight, you have a communication from Marie Koper regarding an upcoming energy conference.
Thank you, Nancy. Now, we're into the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are items on the agenda that have an asterisk next to them. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda tonight? Seeing none, Nancy, would you like to read through those agenda items?
For the consent calendar, we're recommending approval of your minutes of your regular meeting of April 22. We have two items under bids and quotes this evening. One is for the bid for both the Maple Street reconstruction and the alley reconstruction, and this alley is between Fancher and Kinney from Wisconsin to Locust, and it was previously petitioned by property owners and was approved via special assessment by the City Commission in early 2018. Overall, the two projects that were sent for bid together came in over budget based on the low bid by just over $43,000, and we believe that overage is due to three factors. One is that overall construction prices are tending to be a little higher based on the amount of work available and the demand for the contractors. Secondly, the budget for Maple Street was initially based on a design width of 37 feet, but final design ended up being at 41 feet. And thirdly, as we previously indicated, the bids went out a little bit later due to that redesign than what we had originally hoped for. In spite of the fact that they came in over budget, we have appropriate funds in all of those, we have appropriate funds available in all of those funds to still cover the two projects for this year. We should note that on the alley project, since 70% of the cost is special assessed, this bid may result in a small increase in the special assessment to the adjacent property owners, but what the ordinance requires us to do is look at the actual cost once the project is complete because sometimes during the construction, the prices may change. If there are no changes to the project during the construction, the overall project may be $3,500 higher based on the bid prices. If 70% of that increase is spread to the properties, the individual assessments per property could rise by approximately $180 each, but those would come back to the City Commission for consideration before we would actually adjust those special assessments. Assuming this bid is approved tonight, the construction of the alley would begin in June, and the reconstruction on Maple Street would occur in the July and August timeframe. We recommend approval of the low-qualified bid of Crawford Contracting for $629,070 for those two projects and the appropriate budget amendments as outlined in the memo. Our second bid this evening is to replace the card reader at the airport for fuel dispensing. The current dispensing system will no longer be supported after June of this year, and since fuel sales are our primary source of revenue to fund the airport, it's important that this critical piece of equipment be operational. We're recommending a sole-source purchase from Sparling Corporation, as this is the company that originally designed the fuel system and is the only authorized distributor in the state. The price for the project is $22,850 and is below the budgeted amount. The next item on the consent calendar is for you to consider final approval of a temporary traffic control order on Franklin Street. Signs were put in place for three-hour parking on the west side of Franklin between Mosher and Chippewa, and no complaints have been received regarding this order, so we recommend you approve the resolution as a final order, and we will correct the wording in the resolution to reflect today's date. The next item is a resolution for your consideration that's related to the small cell wireless facilities. You recently approved amendments to Chapter 113 of our ordinance based on the Public Act that was passed late last year, and that brought our ordinance into compliance with the new state law. One of the items in that law allows us, in a limited way, to establish some regulations for the placement of the equipment in the right-of-way, so the city attorney has recommended that these regulations be outlined in a resolution passed by the City Commission, so we recommend you approve that resolution as presented. The next item on the consent calendar is consideration of an agreement with Central Michigan Mental Health Facilities Board. We're recommending tonight that you authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with the facilities board regarding the construction of a storm sewer on Crapo Street. Part of Crapo Street is planned for reconstruction in 2022, and we intended at that time to expand the storm sewer system in that area. But this year, the Central Michigan Mental Health Facilities Board, who has property on Crapo Street, is investing money in their property to extensively update the storm drain management system and some of the surrounding properties. For those improvements to work properly, the extension of our public storm drain is needed, so we've worked out an agreement with the board, and the city attorney has drafted the agreement, which would have the public portion of the storm sewer expanded this year as part of their project. The ownership after construction would be transferred to the city, and we would pay up to $106,000 for the work in our public right-of-way. This will provide additional storm water protection to various properties in that area. And lastly, is the approval of perils and warrants.
Commissioner Coolick?
Hope to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Commissioner Tolles?
Support.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar items?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have a public hearing on an amendment to our zoning ordinance for general sign provisions. I will now open the public hearing. If you'd like to wish to make comment, please come to the podium, state your name, your address, and you'll have five minutes.
Mayor, I would just mention, in case anybody's in the audience and is unsure, this correction is merely to correct a typographical error that was in the zoning ordinance to reference a correct paragraph. It was supposed to be 4E instead of 5E in one of the sections of the sign ordinance.
Thank you. Seeing no one come forward, I will now close the public hearing. Commissioner Coolick?
Hope to approve the amendment as presented.
Do we have a second? Commissioner LaLong? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item number 14 is to discuss the reconstruction design of Brown Street and confirmed design. Manager Riz, would you like to introduce us?
Yes, I will, and this might help answer the gentleman's questions about some of the background about why this item is on your agenda. Brown Street between Broadway and North Drive is scheduled for reconstruction in 2020. Part of this project is partially funded by a grant from the Michigan Department of Transportation in the-- in the amount of $375,000. We had assumed when we created the capital improvement plan that MDOT would likely require us to utilize their design specifications for this reconstruction of the street, which would typically include 11-foot lanes. We've recently learned that in this instance, MDOT will allow our standard design, which includes 10-foot lanes. So for a neighborhood street such as this, our standard design would be 10-foot shared lanes with parallel parking on both sides. And this design is consistent with what's recommended in the non-motorized plan for streets, for this specific street, as a matter of fact. So based on that kind of a design, it would allow the road to be narrowed to approximately 37 feet to accommodate that. And narrower streets are an often-used design element of our complete streets-type philosophy because it enhances safety for motorists, pedestrians, and bicyclists, as narrower streets typically result in slower speeds and there's less room to have to cross for the pedestrians. The narrower street also reduces the impervious surface and reduces long-term maintenance. During the work session discussion on this topic two weeks ago, concern was expressed, though, about the number of institutional users along this street and the amount of the school traffic. So as you know, letters were sent to the property owners on Brown Street, all the way from Broadway to High, as that second section from North Drive to High is scheduled in 2022 for reconstruction as well. As I mentioned earlier, three communications were received and are included in your packet. And all of those communications encouraged you to keep the width of the street at its current width. The zoning ordinance does set standards when new streets and neighborhoods are constructed regarding the design and the width of the street. Although it doesn't require that the city narrow the street during a reconstruction process, a reconstruction provides us the opportunity to consider doing that to make it consistent with the zoning ordinance, but it's not a requirement. So the question before you tonight is whether the conceptual design of the street should be based on the 37 feet, which would accommodate two 10-foot lanes and parallel parking, or whether you would prefer to keep it at the current 40 to 41 feet, which again would keep it with 10-foot lanes, edge striping, but there would be more space for the parallel parking. And the reason direction is needed tonight is we have a contracted engineering firm waiting to complete the final design based on these conceptual parameters, and they must complete that design to meet the MDOT deadlines to obtain the grant funding. So we prepared two motions for your consideration tonight. One is to do the conceptual design based on a width of 37 feet, or the alternative is to do a conceptual design based on the current width of the street.
Commissioner Kulik.
I move that we do the conceptual design at the current width of the street.
Commissioner LaLonge? Any discussion? Commissioner Kulik.
Once this vote's taken, I'd also like to have us put on the agenda for a future meeting to repeal the non-motorized plan as an ordinance and make it strictly an advisory document. Since we don't seem to want to abide by it, we decided to leave Maple Street wide. This street, I think, should be left wide. The Fiasco on Pickard Street, I think we're just bogging ourselves down by having that as an ordinance and not as an advisory document.
Vice Mayor Gillis.
I agree with Commissioner Kulik. I don't think we should be using a document as a cookie cutter for every street that we redo. I think we have to take every instance individually as a unique thoroughway or artery and examine its possibility for bike lanes or three lanes versus four lanes or wider streets. So I also agree with that sentiment. I just wanted to mention, we have a zoning ordinance, yet a lot of our building that happens in the city does not fit our zoning ordinance, and that's why we have a zoning board of appeals. So when construction cannot be accommodated on a certain parcel, they have an alternative to make that construction or development work. So I also think this is another reason why we should be using that as an advisory document.
Is there any other discussion? Commissioner Tolles.
I will be sporting this to keep it at the 40-foot width for the safety factor and the heavily-used ambulances and the rest of the traffic that goes down that road. And I'm also in agreement with Commissioner Kulik on amending that ordinance.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we will go into a vote. All those in favor of the ordinance or the motion, please vote by saying aye.
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 And those opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Will that be put on a future agenda on how to repeal the non-motorized plan and make it an advisory document instead of an ordinance?
Oh, we can refer that to our agenda meeting and...
Thank you.
Item number 17 is to consider whether a public hearing to adjust the 2019 millage rate should be held, and if so, to set a public hearing. If you wish to not change our millage rate, do so by saying nothing.
I would just point out, this is an annual agenda topic that the City Commission has to consider because in December, you set a millage rate for this year at 16.25 mils. But before sending the tax bills out, you always have the opportunity to think about that millage rate again and decide if you want to make a change to it. As your finance director indicated in the memo, although there's new information on a number of our assumptions that went into the 2019 budget, we still recommend the current millage rate of 16.25 mils. So as the mayor indicated, if you agree with that recommendation, no actions necessary. But if you desire to consider changing the millage rate either up or down, a public hearing would need to be set.
Seeing no one jumping to make a motion, we'll move on. Item number 19 is consider appointments as recommended by the appointments committee for various boards. If we have one appointment with the... Vice Mayor Gillis, would you like to introduce our appointment?
Yes, the appointments committee met two weekends ago, and we are recommending to the full City Commission an appointment for Joshua Jerome to the local development finance authority, term to expire December 31st, 2020.
Support.
Commissioner Tolles.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think you had too many there. Commissioner Gillis, were you making that motion? Or Vice Mayor Gillis? Typically, when you read it, you were making the motion, so we had a second, so we probably didn't need another second. Is that how you want to do it?
Thank you.
Okay. So I can get it in the minutes how you want it?
Okay.
Sure. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations to our new appointment. Do we have any announcements on city-related business or new business? Commissioner Kulik.
I'd like to remind everybody that last year, a new statewide law was passed requiring that motor vehicles give bicycles a three-foot clear passing area. So don't crowd us out on the road. It is the law. Tickets can be issued. Is that a moving violation, chief? You don't want the points on your record just because you want to crowd me. Thank you.
Any other announcements tonight? Vice Mayor Gillis.
I would like to start off that, being that we're trying to accommodate bicyclists throughout Mount Pleasant, I would like to see them also follow the rules of the road, stopping at stop signs, stopping at traffic lights, yielding when they are supposed to be yielding to traffic. In the past, the few bicyclists I have seen on our roads tend to fly through the stop signs downtown along Main and Washington while they're crossing High Street. They may slow down on their bicycles, look both ways, and head right through the intersections. I feel that if the bicycling community wants to have our roads established so they can travel on our roads, I think we should entail our officers to enforce the bicyclists along with the vehicles that are abiding the rules of the road so that in the future, if there tends to be more bicyclists on the road, myself as a driver will know that I will know what they are going to do rather than trying to second-guess what they're going to do. Are they going to stop at that stop sign like they're supposed to, or are they going to go through that stop sign? So I think there has to be some law enforcement engagement with the bicyclists. And I also would like to see if there is something we can do about having them where either have reflective baubles or reflective lights on their bikes or reflective clothing, because it's very hard to see bicyclists in the evening, at dusk, when they're all in black and they're traversing our roads, and it would just make it safer for both of us, motorists and bicyclists. And I also would just like to make an idea or a motion that we discuss our closed-session topic at a work session. I'm not sure if I can do that and ask for a majority of our other city commissioners if we could open up that information to a work session and allow everyone to hear that information.
As you know, I've drafted a confidential written legal opinion. That information is privileged, and so in order to do that, the commission would have to waive the privilege on behalf of the city, which I never recommend.
And thirdly, on a good note, we do have some vacancies on our committees. One is the material recovery facility. Our recycling center has an opening. Our historic district commission has an opening, and our zoning board of appeals has a vacancy. So if you're interested into any of those three committees, you can go to the mountpleasant.org website. Under Boards and Commission, there's an application. Fill out as many as you are interested in. It just doesn't have to be one, but if you're interested in more than one, or even one that doesn't have a vacancy, please put in your application, and we would love to have you join our team. Thank you.
Does anyone else have announcements or new business? Seeing none, we will now recess into our work session about the sidewalks and snow removal report. I'm being reminded that we have another public comment section. If you'd like to discuss any non-agenda items or agenda items, anything that's city-related business, you can come to the podium. You'll have five minutes. Just state your name and your address.
Hello, my name's Glenn Bordine. I'm the public relations officer for Consano, one of the three dispensaries in town that was issued a, or will be issued a license. My address is 7265 South Mission Road, near Mount Pleasant. I'd like to talk to you about recreational legalization of marijuana. Okay. Recreational marijuana legalization is a hot-button topic. Some public concerns around recreational marijuana legalization is that it negatively affects home values in a community that allows recreational marijuana businesses. This is absolutely not what happens. The debate is now entering even the real estate industry groups as a topic. Every home buyer needs to know how the housing market will be affected by this cultural shift. To bring some light to the topic, researchers found that cities that allow retail dispensaries saw home prices increase $22,888 on average, according to MLS data, compared to cities that don't participate. And also, the Cato Institute, which C-A-T-O Institute research, supports these findings. Those of us that are homeowners in Central Michigan have noticed home values increase. I myself have seen more than $7,000 increase in my home value this year alone since recreational marijuana passed in the state of Michigan. For cities where only medical marijuana is legal, home values increased at a comparable rate as cities that didn't have these types of businesses at all. States that legalize recreational cannabis see an immediate bump in home values following legalization, even without retail dispensaries open. From 2017 to 2019, states where recreational marijuana is legal saw values increase on average of $6,337, more than cities that do not participate. States that do not participate. Again, the homeowners in our city have noticed home values increase, including myself, again at more than $7,000 in the last six months. Another example is Denver, Colorado, who since 2014, when the first recreational shops opened, seen the property value increase of 67.8%, which is the most significant growth the city has seen in more than two decades. Colorado as a whole has seen property values increase by 58%. And Washington State has experienced 57% of increase in home values. Well, there are tax benefits to legalizing marijuana medicinally. There was not a statistically significant increase of home values in cities where only medical marijuana is permitted. So why does recreational marijuana retail dispensaries lead to home price boosts? Well, according to 2017 study from the University of Mississippi, recreational marijuana attracts more home buyers as marijuana businesses attract people and flocks, driving up the demand for housing. In addition to higher home values, home sellers in both Colorado and Washington have enjoyed fewer days in the market when compared to the national average following recreational marijuana policy. Investing in a house market where recreational marijuana is both legalized and accessible is a safe bet, as homes with close proximity to dispensaries tend to have higher home values. Of course, bureaucratic red tape can and does slow progress and absolutely delays property value growth. By delaying growth created by access to recreational marijuana, cities lose tax revenue created not only by recreational marijuana businesses, but also taxes lost from potential increased property values.
Glenn, I just want to let you give about 50 seconds.
I'm sorry?
You have about 50 seconds left.
Okay. Thank you. For example, Colorado Springs has learned this lesson and absolutely regrets prior decisions to allow only medical marijuana to be accessible within the city limits. Data suggests real estate investors find blazing housing markets in cities where recreational marijuana is legalized and accessible. By delaying property values, increases property owners that seek to use their properties' increased value are robbed of the opportunity, such as to make improvements to their lots, homes, and the possibility by growth in home equity and refinancing homes for lower payments also. Cities that lack a regulated recreational marijuana access in legalized recreational states show a substantially slower growth rate compared to the national average in recreationally legal states. The positive effects of recreational marijuana in legalized states on the housing market can't be denied. That's about all I have, right, roughly? Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission tonight? Seeing no one step forward, I will close the public comment section. And we will now recess into a work session about the snow removal report prepared by staff. We'll be going into Conference Room A upstairs. You're welcome to join.